I'm John Dunn. I have the privilege, honor of serving as interim chancellor of Southern Illinois University, your campus, Carbondale. I want to welcome each and every one of you tonight to the campus. I see many, many friends out there, but also others who perhaps have traveled some distance to be here, and we're pleased that you're here. Thank you. We are very, very honored this evening to play host to one of the longest-standing hallmarks of our democracy, an opportunity for citizens to interact directly with elected officials. The late U.S. Senator Paul Simon wrote a column in 1986 entitled "Democracy Thrives on the Town Meeting Circuit." In it, he shared the value of these opportunities, which included this line, and I quote, "The best serve the people of Illinois. I should not be sitting in Washington simply listening to what highly-paid lobbyists have to say. I need to touch the public pulse, to sense the public mood, and I need to talk to people about their specific problems," end quote. That is why Senator Tammy Duckworth is here tonight. Like Paul Simon, she cares deeply about all of Illinois and is eager to engage with those she represents in Washington, and to take the public's pulse, our pulse, your pulse. This April, I had the opportunity to watch her excel in this regard in similar settings in Washington, D.C. So I'm really delighted to have her here tonight with us at SIU, especially as we celebrate the 150th anniversary of this great university. Yeah, we were founded in 1869. If you do your math, 150 years gets you to 219. And that's pretty impressive. We should all be very, very proud of that. And to underscore the celebration of 150th anniversary, we're doing a number of activities tonight is one of those, and it's extremely important. Before I go any further, I want to acknowledge, we have some very special guests here with us this evening. We're very pleased. That includes two of our trustees of the university, Dr. Savas Sharma. Please, Savas, thank you. Breon Lockett. Breon, thank you. We have a very, very good partner and a good friend, and our mayor, Mayor Henry, and his wife, Terri, thank you for being with us tonight. Thank you. And I know that she is here, but she may be speaking with the senator, and that's Lieutenant Governor, former Lieutenant Governor Sheila Simon and her husband, Terry. So when we see them, yeah. Oh, hey! Thank you, thank you. And she doesn't know this, but I also want to make sure you know that our provost was here. Mira?
Yes.
Oh, Dr. Kamaraji, thank you. All smart chancellors and presidents, make sure you introduce your work-to-be provost, because they carry a lot of important responsibilities here. I also have the privilege of welcoming to the podium Peyton Moore. Peyton is a sophomore here at the university. We're very proud of her and pleased she's an Army veteran, and she's here to lead all of us in a pledge of allegiance. So, thank you, and a nice round of applause, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. That was very well done. Peyton, thank you. Senator Duckworth will be with us shortly and be introduced formally, but we do want to thank her for taking time to get out of Washington and come to campus. It's now my pleasure to introduce and turn the podium over and the rest of the evening to John Shaw, who's the director of the Paul Simon Public Policy Institute. John is going to moderate this evening, and, John, it's in your good hands. Thank you.
As the chancellor said, town hall meetings were one of the sort of hallmarks of Paul Simon's career. In fact, I was looking at his memoir this afternoon, and I saw where he held 600 town hall meetings during his two terms as senator. Now, my math is a little rusty, but I think that averages out to about four a month or about one a week. And many of them were sort of unabashedly simple affairs, where he'd come to a small library or something and just sit down and say, "What's on your mind?" But I think this is an important part of his legacy. And one of the things we've tried to do at the institute is create a program for the best practices for town hall meetings. Our thought is that town hall meetings have become very contentious in this country, if you watch the news at all. And we thought about putting together a set of best practices for how town hall meetings can be conducted. We developed this program last year. We sent it out to the Illinois Congressional delegation, received a good response. We've been working with the Luger Center in Washington, who is using our plan as a model for town hall meetings across the country. So we feel very good about that. And in terms of models, we're hoping that tonight serves as kind of a model for the rest of the country about how you can have a town hall meeting during a contentious, difficult political time, but it be conducted with civility and respect. And that was sort of the hallmark of our program, was that it's important for public officials to meet with their constituents, but it's also important for constituents to ask hard and probing questions, but to do so in a very respectful way. So with that format in place, I just want to say just a moment about how we'll proceed. I'm going to introduce the senator in just a second. She's going to come up and give a brief opening statement. She made it clear to us in the green room that she's much more interested in hearing your comments and thoughts than she is giving a long speech. So what we're going to do is, I'm going to turn it over to her after I introduce her. She's going to give a brief opening remark. Then there will be questions that you have written that will be handed to me. I will call a name and ask you to stand up. A microphone will be brought over, and you're allowed, of course, to ask any question you want. We would hope that they would be brief, so we can get as many questions in as possible. And then we're going to have a time towards the end for the press in the back room to ask some questions. And then the senator at the end of the evening is going to be taking photographs with whoever is interested in coming up, but I will have one of her staffers explain how that protocol will go forward. So let me just take a second to introduce the senator. As many of you know, Senator Duckworth was elected in 2016. She's had a very wide-ranging and interesting career, has served in the Army. She was Director of Illinois Department of Veterans Affairs. She was Assistant Secretary of Veterans Affairs for President Obama, and served for two years in the House as a representative. Going back further, the senator attended the University of Hawaii, has a master's from George Washington in D.C., has a PhD in Political Science from Northern Illinois University, and has also a doctorate in Human Services from Capella University. The senator served in the Illinois National Guard for 23 years as a helicopter pilot and was one among the first women to fly combat missions in Iraq. She sustained a serious injury in 2004 and has made an amazing recovery. And I'm sure we'll talk about some of her experience at Walter Reed, which was apparently an important point in her life. In terms of her service in the Senate, she serves on a number of committees that are extremely important: Armed Services, the Environment Committee, Commerce Committee, and the Small Business Community. So with that, I'd like to introduce Senator Tammy Duckworth. I'm going to go over there and join her for a conversation. So thank you so much.
Hello.
Senator, the floor serves.
Thank you. I am a politician after all. They just gave me this hat. Oops, was that me? Oh, no, okay. Well, it's great to be here. I love town halls. I love hearing from the people that I serve, whether or not we agree on all of the issues. I think it is fundamental to our democracy and who we are as a nation, and it sets us apart from other nations around the world, where people don't have the freedom to express their opinions to their elected officials. And I think that's what makes America a leader of the free world, because we do do this, and we can do this, and you have the right to do this. And so I want to make sure that we follow the tradition of town halls, and I have the great privilege -- let me backtrack. So in the Senate, every senator has one of these antique wooden desks. It's been around for a couple hundred years. And every senator that had the desk before you has carved their name into their desks. So it's senatorial graffiti, I guess. Vandalization of government property. But I have Paul Simon's desk. So I feel I am privileged to have his desk. It was assigned to me. You don't get to choose it. They're like, "This is yours." And when I opened it up, and there was his name. And what's so remarkable is that every other senator has their name in -- oh, it's also Barack Obama's desk. And it's got, you know, everybody's names is in there, but Paul Simon is the only one. He was so humble that he actually put Illinois next to his name. Like, he had to explain who he was, you know, this giant of the Senate. So I feel, sitting at his desk, quite literally, and following in his footsteps, that the town hall is a tradition that I feel a responsibility to help uphold, and that's why I'm here. And so let me just say, before we go to questions, I just wanted to talk about the committees that I'm on and why I chose those committees. Armed Services is quite obvious. I am a strong person when it comes to veterans' issues, but also the military issues. And we are down now to such a small number of veterans serving in our Congress, House and Senate combined, that there's not a lot of voices of those who have worn the uniform. According to Tom Cor -- to one of my colleagues, I think there's only one Vietnam veteran left in the Senate, still serving, with the death of John McCain. There's just one. And there's only a handful of us who are Iraq and Afghanistan veterans. And so I felt it was important to serve on Armed Services Committee, where I am really trying to take control, take leadership when it comes to discussions of declarations of war, when we should go to war, when we should not go to war, whether or not there's checks and balances in the system for when we can go to war, those types of discussions on the authorizations for use of military force. I sit also on Commerce, Science, and Transportation, and associated with that, I also sit on Environment and Public Works. And the key in those two is that between Public Works and Transportation, I cover all forms of infrastructure. So road, rail, bridges, Mississippi, lock dams, airports, everything, railways. I just was sitting down with the Frederick Weywood Minister of Batory yesterday, talking about what are we going to do to fix the shunting issue with the Saluki Line and get it back on schedule. So literally just yesterday, we were having this conversation. I was not pandering to you. I actually -- I had asked him in committee if he would come talk to me about what is going on. We need to figure this out. And he said, "Well, I can come see you tomorrow." And so we saw him yesterday. I'm also the ranking member on the Surface Transportation Subcommittee, which means the highway bill is one of my major projects over the course of the next six months. I also work on small business. I'm very interested in issues of investing in small businesses, because here in Illinois, small businesses make up over 95% of our employers in our entire state. People think it's large companies. It's not. It's small businesses, 100, 150 employees or less, are actually the majority of our employers. And that's the work that I do. And I'm really looking forward to this conversation. I'll shut up and listen to you now. Thank you.
Great. Senator, what I'm going to do is just read names. They're going to stand up. The microphone will be delivered to them, and they'll pose a brief question or brief comment to you, and let you respond as you will. So the first question will come from Jean Taylor. If Jean could stand up, and we would bring a microphone over to Jean. And then I might just say, the next person will be Diane Sarco will be the second one.
Before Jean speaks, I forgot to say one thing. There was an error. I do not have a PhD from NIU. I am ABD. I'm writing my dissertation. So it's important with this crowd. Go ahead.
Thank you for coming tonight, Senator. Since the new House took over in January, they have passed well over 100 bills that would further what needs to be done in this country. And Mitch McConnell has them all sitting in a little stack in his office, where they will never see the light of day. That's a fact. What can we do, short of moving to Kentucky to vote against him, which I have thought about? What can we do to try to get past this bottleneck? I mean, it's just total gridlock.
It is. The Senate has become the legislative graveyard. There's been good bipartisan legislation that the House has passed. It's not partisan stuff. It's bipartisan, supported by 90, 95% of the American people. For example, universal background check legislation on guns, something supported by 95% of Americans and most NRA members, universal background check to close the gun show loophole. There is legislation that has to do with environmental policy, investing in a carbon-neutral future, in biofuels, all of those legislation, ag legislation. But Mitch McConnell is solely focused on pushing through judicial nominees at this point, and they're very partisan. In fact, just about three weeks ago, on partisan lines, we confirmed a gentleman who's in his 30s, who had never tried a case in court, to a 15-year judicial appointment, was found unanimously unqualified by the American Bar Association, and every Republican voted for him. And he is now a judge. The first day he walks into the courtroom in judicial robes will be the first day he's been in a courtroom since mock trials in law school. And so what can you do? I mean, the political answer is, we have to flip the Senate. Mitch McConnell has been very clear. He's given these speeches, and you can look him up. He said he's solely focused on judicial nominations, to change the course of jurisprudence in this country for the next couple of generations, while he has a chance.
Hi. I was just wondering, in terms of our sort of immigration crisis right now, ICE raids, detention camps, what will you be doing to sort of help close those camps as soon as possible and protect our immigrants?
Well, so I've done quite a lot on immigration policy. Let me just first give you my philosophy on what we need to do. Number one, I think we need comprehensive immigration reform. And whatever we do on immigration policy, I go by three guidelines for myself. One, it has to be something that is achievable. So when conservatives say, "Well, we need to go and round up all of the undocumented people and put them in jail," that's not achievable. It's not practical. It can't happen. We want to build a continuous wall along the border. It's not practical. It can't happen. There are parts where you can't put a wall, and you can't seize land from private landowners to make this happen. It has to be fair, so that those who have come here illegally, while there should be a pathway to citizenship, there should be some penalties for having broken the law, while others have tried to do it the right way. Fees, fines, penalties, go to the end of the line, whatever that is. But it has to be something that's practical, and it has to be humane. And ultimately, what's happening in this country, under President Trump's zero-tolerance policy, is inhumane. It is un-American, and it is inhumane. The separation of families, the criminalization of people seeking protections from persecution back home, for people seeking a better life, people who are fleeing criminals, to criminalize their actions when they're -- I have a 15-month-old daughter. I cannot imagine, looking at my 15-month-old child and deciding the very best thing I can do for her is to take her on a thousand-mile trek with only what I could carry, risking criminals, giving up everything that I own, and then hoping to be allowed across the border, and then not, and then thinking still, out of desperation, that the best thing I could do for her is to jump into the river and try to swim across. That's not who we are as a country. So we need to stop decriminalizing this. We need comprehensive immigration reform. We need a guest worker program. We need to do all of these things. What am I doing right now? In addition to supporting these pieces of legislation, I am working on a lot of issues that have to do, that are veteran-related. Did you know that we are now deporting veterans? People who have worn the uniform of this country bled for us, many of, some of whom with Purple Hearts, have been deported and are sitting in Tijuana without access, separated from their families. The Trump administration, just in the last two weeks, have announced that they're going to start deporting the children and family members of currently-serving militaries men and women who are downrange in Afghanistan. Can you imagine that you're going to go out and look for terrorists, whether it's in Niger or Afghanistan, or wherever you are in the world, and you're worried about people coming, ICE coming to knock down the door of your home, and deporting your spouse and your kids, maybe going into, what, foster care, detention themselves? This is crazy. I think most Americans want to fix. We have a broken immigration system, and we can fix it. And I talk to Republicans all the time, and they agree with me behind closed doors. But then, when it comes down to it, it's a party-line vote, and that's simply wrong. So I'm going to push as hard as I can. I've been out to the detention facilities. We're pushing for better conditions. I am sign-on to every piece of legislation that has to do with comprehensive immigration reform. I'm sign-on to every piece of legislation that helps make our immigration system better. And certainly, all of the ones that will help veterans are ones that I've actually been the one to author them and submit them.
Brandon McElnery. And then after Brandon, it's going to be Molly Johnson.
And, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Trump recently has asked about, has made an executive order to require federal agencies to provide the Department of Commerce with information regarding citizenship status for individuals. How does that excuse him from not disclosing his tax returns to Congress?
Well, I think you and I are in agreement. I think that the president needs to allow us to see his tax returns. And I think that he has certainly overreached his executive authorities. But I will tell you that he's not the first president, and it's certainly not only Republicans that have overstepped executive authorities. I think for decades now, the United States Congress, and, you know, my colleagues and I, have not done our job to be the proper checks and balances, and we've allowed the executive branch to overreach. And so we need to step up and take some of these tough votes, and take some of these tough stands, and have some of these tough discussions. It's why I'm pushing for discussions on a new authorization for use of military force when it comes to future conflicts and sunsetting the use of military force, the authorization that's in existence. And I think it's similar with the president's executive orders as well. I think he's certainly overreached. We're suing him in court, and we're fighting every step of the way. But at the end of the day, Mitch McConnell controls everything, and all we do is vote and lose on really bad judicial nominees. Before that judge that we just confirmed three weeks ago, it was a woman who was in her 40s, to a lifetime appointment, who was also found unqualified by the Bar Association. I mean, it's, there were like 40 of these people already. But it is a fight, and we do the best that we can, and we challenge him every step that we can. But until my Republican colleagues are willing to step up and put some checks and balances on the president, I'm in the minority, and I show up and I vote, and we lose.
Okay. Molly Johnson, and then followed by Jennifer Rae.
Do you think it's possible to save the Affordable Care Act, and how?
I have a glimmer of hope when it comes to the Affordable Care Act, and it's because the American public spoke up once before and made it happen. So I've been pretty pessimistic about not being able to get anything done in terms of votes. But we did save the Affordable Care Act just over a year and a half ago, with the famous John McCain vote. But it was also Susan Collins, and it was also Lisa Murkowski, right? That vote, that night, when we were headed into that vote, I was sure that we, as Democrats, were going to lose, because I didn't think we had the vote. But you know who won that? It wasn't me talking to the Republicans. It wasn't any of us talking to our colleagues. It was the American people. It was the moms and dads of kids with disabilities who had camped out that entire summer. My office is next to Lisa Murkowski's office. There was a mom and dad of two separate families, a mom and her child, and a dad and his child, camped out in the vestibule between Lisa Murkowski's office and mine for three months, for three months. And I let her use my office to change his catheter to, I mean, these are kids with disabilities. And every day, anybody that walked into Lisa Murkowski's office, they said, "My child would die if you eliminate the Affordable Care Act. My child would die." And it was the people of the disability community, and it was the families who showed up, and the American people, day after day after day after day, who said, "You will not take my coverage for my pre-existing condition. You will not make me pay more because I'm a woman. You will not take my kid's asthma inhaler away." It was the American people that won that vote. And that's how we got those three Republicans to vote with us. And I think that we could save the Affordable Care Act, but it's going to take the American people and a similar effort. I'm doing everything that I can, but I don't think, at this point, that anybody on the Republican side are listening to the Democrats. I think we can reach through to my colleagues, through their constituents, through you, reaching out to the congressmen, the congresswomen, and to the senators, and to me, too. So send me those emails and those letters and the faxes and the phone calls, because what that allows me to do is to be able to stand on the floor of the Senate and say, "I have received 500,000 contacts from my constituents in this, you know, three months alone on this issue, and they do not want us to eliminate the Affordable Care Act." So I do have a glimmer of hope, but it's going to take people like you, who are spending a Friday night on a beautiful summer day, doing your civic duty, instead of outside eating barbecue. You might go have barbecue later, but you're doing your civic duty. But it takes you.
Thank you, Senator. Jennifer? And then after Jennifer, John Turner.
First of all, I would like to thank you for your service, not only to our state and our nation, but what you did in the military for us. It's unspeakable, and thank you so much. I'm a Union County resident, and there was a day that I'll never forget, being a former employee, seeing a chartered bus pull up. And I have never seen this ever, where it's allowed to protest a certain court case. How can we stop frivolous lawsuits and defamation of character, especially if, I felt, you were being targeted? And I have never seen anyone in costumes with jumpsuits saying, "Lock her up." These masks that came off of the bus, it was disgusting, and it made me more proud to be an American, knowing that there was a classy person like you that was going to be on the ballot. And my mother is a state retiree. My whole family is pretty much a state retiree, and mixed party, but 100% behind you. So how can we stop this? How can we make it where these people are harassing people, targeting people, and taking certain things that happen possibly in their workplace, and then going after people like you that hold the position that you formerly held, as well as been on the ballot, to help represent all of us?
Thank you. Well, that bus was chartered by an organization funded by the Koch Brothers. Those folks were bussed in to Union County from far north and lots of other places, and were paid to get on that bus by dark money. So what do we need? I think we need public financing of campaigns and no outside funding, period. I think we need third-party drawing of district boundaries, so that it is a fair fight. And, you know, that's the nasty side of politics. That's going to happen. What they do is they do a poll, and they see what is your strongest, what is your, the candidate's strongest factor, and then they go after that. It's classic Karl Rove strategy. He introduced it. And so they figured out that my strongest position is my reputation for being a veterans' advocate, and then they ginned up something. And by the way, I would make those same decisions as State Director of Veterans Affairs again, if I had to do it again, because any time I find a state employee not doing their job to take care of veterans, I will fire them.
John Turner, and then followed by Julie Peterson.
Thank you. My question is related to health care, but it's veterans' health care, and I'd like to know what you see in the future of veterans-- know what you see in the future of veterans' healthcare. I see in our area, to see specialists, we have to go outside the VA, and we're in a more rural area here, so we don't have the doctors in, in that 40-mile radius that can take care of special situations.
Yeah, so I think we're at a point right now in the discussion of veterans' healthcare, where all Americans agree veterans deserve to get the healthcare that they've earned. But most Americans do not know that most veterans cannot go to VA for healthcare. Everybody thinks that just because you're a veteran, you get to go to VA for healthcare, but actually VA rations its healthcare, so that you can only get care for your injury, for whatever your condition is that was injured during your military service, as a result of your military service. Unless you're a 100% disabled veteran like me. If you're 100% disabled like me, then my whole body gets taken care of. But if you're not 100%, you only get that foot that you twisted on that parachute jump, or that back that you broke when your, when your Humvee rolled over, taken care of. And they don't take care of the rest of you, unless your income is sufficiently low, and it's, and it depends on the part of the country, but it's somewhere around $30,000. If you're low-income enough, then the VA will take care of you, but if you're, that bar is so low that if, you know, if you make $40,000, you can't go to the VA for your entire body. There's no dental care, for example, unless you're 100% disabled like me, or, you know, something happened in your military service that injured your, your teeth. There's no eyeglasses care, again, unless you're 100% disabled. So what do we do? There's two lines of argument, of, of thought here. One, if the VA lacked capacity to take care of veterans, then let's just give every veteran an ID card, and let them go out into the healthcare system, and we'll just pay, it will just be their insurance card, and they can, they can go wherever they want, and they can get the healthcare they need immediately, they don't have to wait in line to try to get into VA, they don't have to prove anything, they just get the care. It sounds like a good idea, but it's really privatization of VA, and it's done by folks who want to get rid of the VA, and who want to make money off of the back of veterans. My argument counter to this is that we must keep VA around, and we must keep VA available to veterans, but we can't adjust the way VA works. And the reason VA is important is because VA understands the veterans' era of service. If you are right now a 65- to 70-year-old veteran, and you go to your family doctor, and you get diagnosed with diabetes, right? You're going to get good care for that diabetes, and you'll be, and, and they'll take care of you, but if that same person goes to the VA, that same man goes to the VA, they'll say, "Oh, are you a Vietnam veteran? Well, then let's check you for ischemic heart disease, leukemia B, prostate cancer, and all of these other conditions that occur five times more often in men who served in Vietnam than, than the general male population." The VA is going to check for all of those other conditions. Now, once you go to VA and you get diagnosed, and they've checked you, and they're your medical center home, if you want your diabetes taken care of outside of VA, then let's pay for that treatment, so that you can actually get that monitoring at a place nearer to where you live. But VA should still be there to monitor you, because you may develop that ischemic heart disease. Same with Gulf War veterans, right? Gulf War Syndrome. Somebody who's in their 50s and early 60s goes into the family doctor and goes, "I've got these neurological problems, I don't know what's going on, I can't figure it out." They're going to Guillain-Barre syndrome, chronic fatigue syndrome, something like that, you go into VA, they're like Gulf War Syndrome, "Let's check you for all of the other things." That's why VA is so valuable. VA has specific knowledge and expertise that no one else has, and that's why we must keep VA around to take care of all of our veterans. But if we can make it easier for veterans to get the x-rays that they need, then let's do that. An idea that I've been working on is to actually marry VA C-Box, Community-Based Outpatient Clinics with rural hospitals, because rural hospitals are vital to rural communities. Oftentimes, they're the largest employer in a two or three-county area. Also, they oftentimes are the only healthcare resource for that community, often for people who are low-income on Medicare or Medicaid. So let's locate, co-locate a lot of C-Box next to a rural hospital, so that when that veteran needs an x-ray, he doesn't have to travel to Marion from Carbondale, he doesn't have to travel to St. Louis, he can just go through one door, out the next, and get that x-ray at that rural hospital. And now we're actually helping to, to, to keep that rural hospital operational, and we're bringing in federal dollars through the veteran themselves. I think that's a good solution moving forward. So there's lots of ideas like that, that we need to keep working on, but ultimately, we need to keep VA around. It's why I go to VA for my healthcare. I get the same healthcare that all senators and congressmen and women get, but I turn that over to VA, and I go to Heinz.
Julie Peterson, followed by Dan Johnson.
Thank you for taking my question. One of my concerns is, has to do with foreign policy. I feel that the Trump administration is totally undoing all of the good diplomatic work that John Kerry had done, and we'll get in our papers, I think everybody here still gets a paper, right? So hopefully, we're getting some real news, and I worry not only about our own people being sent into dangerous places, but Palestinian people, Iranians, Venezuelans, and, you know. So do you see, is there another area of the world that the Trump administration has designs on that we're not apprised of yet?
No, I, I think what we need to do is reclaim our role as, our, our, our role as, as, as the, as the leader of democracy in the world, and, and the moral leader of the world, and we've lost that under President Trump. Now, that reputation was built on decades, if not 100 years, of diplomacy of both Democratic and Republican presidents. I think that President Herbert Walker Bush did tremendous things for our, our diplomatic efforts, and then for our work around the world, and for, for the relationships we had around the world. You know, and, and, and I think that President Trump really just doesn't care about these things, and, and has eroded that, and I think that we need to regain that. I grew up in, let me give you an example. I grew up in Southeast Asia in the, in the 70s. My father was a World War II and a Vietnam vet. He retired after two tours in Vietnam in 1973, and went to work for the United Nations Diplomatic Corps, United Nations Development Program and Refugee Program. So I followed my dad from refugee camp to refugee camp, where he was bringing American aid, like bags of rice with the American flag on it, and, and, and medical supplies into refugee camps, where the Vietnamese boat people were fleeing, the communists and the Cambodians were fleeing the Khmer Rouge and all of that. America just, America was so respected and loved in that part of the world. Everybody wanted to be like us, everybody wanted to send their kids to America, everybody wanted to do business with American businesses, because we were honest and didn't, didn't take bribes. They wanted to come to the US, but they didn't love us because we had the greatest military on the face of the earth. In fact, our military had just lost a war to an, to an army in black pajamas. They loved us because of diplomatic and humanitarian efforts, and what we stood in terms of the moral center, the values we stood up for. I remember that there would always be, at some point in these refugee camps, a picture of JFK, you know, ripped out of Life magazine, a faded old picture on a wall somewhere. I am all for us having the strongest, most badass military on the face of the earth, because, and, because I think we need it, it is part of our, of our nation's toolbox. But I also think we've neglected our diplomatic efforts too much in the last several years, and we need to reclaim that, because the more that we can do with diplomatic efforts, the less we need to send our young men and women to fight for wars. If the war is just, if, if there is a need for it, I will vote to go. Heck, I'll put my uniform back on and go. I, I may not be able to fly helicopters anymore, but I can man a talk. But let's not spend our men and women in uniform without first expending our efforts diplomatically, and claiming our moral place in the world, whether it has to do with immigration, whether it has to do with how we conduct trade internationally, or whether it is how we represent, you know, a unified front when it comes to climate change. We need to be the world's leader, and, and we're not doing that right now. And the rest of the world is just looking at us like, "What is going on with America?" Right? And, and whether or not they, you, you support or like President Trump, this divisiveness, this tribalism that has happened in our country, this us versus them, Democrats versus Republicans, progressives versus conservatives, this is not good for our democracy where we are right now, and we can do better. And town halls and the rules of the road that you've put together for town halls, I think is one of the steps that leads us back to finding who we are as an American people, so that we can have this discourse in a way that doesn't demonize the other side, and allows us to come together and find a path forward that we can, that we can work together on.
Great, thank you. So, Dan Johnson, and then followed up by Steve Molly, I think I pronounced that right, from Mount Vernon. So Dan, and then Steve.
Ooh, there's a statue of me in Mount Vernon. It is the most surreal thing to have somebody erect a statue. It's, it's a daughter's American Revolution, it's not actually of me, it's about women in military service, they just use my face to, to represent women in modern military service. The only saving grace for me is the fact that I know at some point there's a pigeon pooping on my head right now.
Thank you, Senator, for coming, being with us today. So I want to just talk about rules and regulations. So I live very rural, and I'm happy to have done that, because I don't have to follow the rules of town, and so I don't like rules so much. But this is really an environmental question. The deregulation of things like the coal industry, those rules, philosophically, I understand the need to get rid of rules that are not helpful. I was wondering about your philosophy about deregulation of industry, and especially about the environment, if you could talk a little bit about that, because there has been a lot of relaxation on regulation.
Well, being under EPA Administrator Pruitt, who has departed, and even now, under the current EPA Administrator, the EPA has actively backed off on enforcing of, a lot of existing laws. They just, they're just not enforcing, they're not conducting the inspections, they're not conducting the reviews, when they do, when they look at contamination of the soil, they're not digging down deep enough to, to see how far the contamination goes. It's an active push to not enforce the laws that exist, not just about not, about deregulating, but they're just ignoring the laws that exist, and they're just not enforcing them, and that's a real problem. We can't go back to the bad old days, when, you know, there was lead in our paint, and, and it was every man for himself. There are basic things that have to do with health and well-being of all of us, like getting lead out of a water supply. Those rules are there, and they matter, and we as a nation agree that those rules are there. That's why we elected people like me to go to the Senate to pass regulations and laws that say we can't have lead in our water supply. But if we don't enforce those laws, then we get situations where our kids are poisoned, and, and we have a problem. And so I think that there's a, there's, there's got to be a balance, and, and I'm all for getting rid of unnecessary rules and regulations, but I think that health and safety is a reasonable standard for enforcement. And it's, unfortunately, it's also a result, the unevenness of how we enforce rules and regulations, especially when it comes to environment, is also a result of racism in this country and our long history. I recently formed the Environmental Justice Caucus with Senator Cory Booker, because I started, as I've traveled around Illinois, started seeing that more and more, it is lower-income neighborhoods, especially black and brown neighborhoods, where we put our toxic waste. It is where people move there, because they can get jobs near these factories, or these coal mines, or whatever, when those businesses are in operation, and then they just dump into the local groundwater, and that's where people live. And those eventually become black and brown communities by, in large part, and that is environmental injustice. And, and so you find in Chicago that you can go from, on the L, on the train, 10 stops from the north side of Chicago to the south side of Chicago, and the life expectancy drops 20 years. Some of that is gun violence, but a lot of that is also environmental, and, and so you have kids here in Carbondale who are, have higher rates of asthma in certain neighborhoods that happen to be black and brown neighborhoods, or poorer neighborhoods than other neighborhoods. That's unfair, and that's not right. So when we talk about enforcement of rules and regulations, we also have to be honest that we've not been fair about how we enforce rules and regulations when it comes to environment in our own country, and a lot of it is based on legacy of racism.
We'll have Steve from Mount Vernon, and then Lauren.
As we know, Department of Labor Secretary resigned today. Do we think that resignation was willingly, or was he sort of pushed out the door? And then, secondly, with that resignation, this brings, I think, 13 to 14 offices that are now staffed by acting people, and Trump says that he likes to have that flexibility. What does he mean when he has more flexibility if they're just acting?
Well, it means that the folks who are acting are not Senate-confirmed, so I don't have the ability to do my job as your senator to say, "No, that person can't have that job, because he's not qualified, or he has ethical issues, or he's in the pocket of the chemical industry," whatever that is, "or he has cut a sweetheart deal for a sex, sex predator who happens to be his friend," and, you know. So that's what it is, and, and the Trump administration is actively not nominating people to these positions, because they like having just acting, so they, these folks do not have to go through, again, Senate confirmation. It's a breakdown of the checks and balances that are in our system, that were put into our system by our founders. And it's an active, it's, it's, it's just as active as the executive overreach of executive orders that the president is, is putting out, it's the same thing. They're just not putting people into places that I get to have my say as your representative. We've got lawsuits going, but there's, there's 2020. I'm sorry. I know that's a political answer, but, um, because of the mechanisms that should have worked, he's even ignoring those, he's ignoring court orders. That's the House side, yeah.
Lauren is up, and then we're going to have Heidi from Carbondale asking about minimum wage, so Lauren.
Thank you, Senator, for being here, I really appreciate it. Recently, my dad has used the VA system, he was diagnosed with cancer, so I just wanted to say thank you for your words on that. My question actually pertains, it's a larger question, but I just want your thoughts, and maybe some of your own opinions on this situation. There's a lot of the opioid crisis going on, but I'm also concerned with the prison system, and how do we get more of rehabilitation for people that are facing this crisis, and the families that are affected by it, rather than the criminalization, and how do we face both of those things, like the criminal acts that come from that addiction problem? But what are your thoughts on where we should go in the future?
Well, I think it's a multi-pronged attack, right? We have to certainly go after the, the drug companies that really push these opioids onto the general public to begin with. I also think that we need to resource the folks who deal with the epidemic. For example, I'm supporting legislation that allow physicians to prescribe, what's the, the, I'm sorry? Not naloxone, but, but the drug that, that you can, I'm sorry? Suboxone? Yeah, it's, it's a drug that, it's a treatment protocol that doctors can, can prescribe that basically takes them off of the opioid, it basically also cuts down on their cravings and allow them to recover. The law was that they could only do, I think, 100 prescriptions, and I, I support legislation to move that up to almost 300 prescriptions, so that we can treat more people. We need to fund more treatment programs. We certainly do need to look at supporting geodiversion programs for nonviolent offenders, that sort of things, that get them into treatment protocols. This is an epidemic across this country, and, and we have to really address it, and we're supporting a lot of that legislation. The good news about this is that it is a bipartisan effort, and, and there are The good news about this is that it is a bipartisan effort, and, and there are a lot of Republicans that are working on this with us, with me, and, and, because they're seeing these same epidemics across the country.
I'm Heidi from Carbondale on the minimum wage, and then Noone Wright after Heidi.
Hi, I'm Heidi from Carbondale. There's been a lot of talk about raising the minimum wage to $15 an hour. I have mixed feelings on that, even though I would benefit from it. From a, a public administrative point of view, what do you find to be the most challenging aspects of raising, of, of that argument, of raising the minimum wage to $15 an hour?
Well, the, the most challenging argument is that businesses will cut the jobs of the people who are the lowest skilled, instead of just hiring people, those folks. So there'll be people that will lose their jobs as a result of increasing the minimum wage to $15. The question is, you asked for the most difficult argument, that's, that is the most difficult argument, is a check, is the, is, you're looking at, okay, so how many people will lose their jobs because of this? And how many people will actually be lifted up out of poverty into a living wage? And, and you have to do that cost-benefit analysis, but these are people and lives. And if we're going to do that, then what are we going to do to help folks at the lower end of the, of the skills spectrum, so that they can find other positions and other jobs that we support them? So we can't just do something and, and just dump tens of thousands of people onto the streets with no jobs, because that will happen. So we have to find ways to help businesses be able to cope with this, but then also to help folks be able to gain the skills to shift to other employment. It would, it would, it would affect all of our taxes, right? Potentially, or we have to cut some, the state would have to cut something else, or come up with the revenue to pay for those additional costs. And, but again, it's, it's a cost-benefit analysis. Lifting people up into a livable wage may mean that they are now less dependent on social service programs, which then saves costs to the state in this other bucket of money. But that is the difficulty, you asked me what was the most difficult argument, that's it.
Okay, Noone Wright, and then we're going to have time for one more question after Noone from George O'Neill.
Good evening, Senator. I have a two-part question. What are you, what are you able, and what are you willing to do as an individual in government, to try to help us heal and grow past this outrageously polarized state that we're in as a nation? And the second part is, what can we do as individual citizens?
Thank you for that question. Well, I have made it my personal motto, guiding principle to be as bipartisan as possible. So I, for example, passed my first piece of legislation at the 63-day mark with Todd Young of Indiana, who's a Republican. I am developing relationships, especially with veterans who are in the Senate, and I try to make all of my legislation as bipartisan as possible. And I pass, for example, addition, that piece of legislation had to do with infrastructure. I've passed legislation that had to do with veterans' business, small business enhancement, again bipartisan. So I very actively seek out Republicans to work with. I just returned to Iraq for the first time in April, and I went with Johnny Isaacson, who is the Republican chairman of the Veterans Affairs Committee, and we traveled together and became good friends. And so I am actively trying to heal those divides and have those very frank conversations with my Republican colleagues. I find my, we all have our own interests in, in that. I find my entry through national service conversations, I find my entry through finding others who are either veterans themselves or have military bases. I, I just worked with Tom Tillis of North Carolina. He actually was very supportive in my effort successfully to get Michael Dorson to not be appointed the chief chemical officer for the VA, for, for the EPA, a man who was funded by the American Chemical Council. And, and this Republican from North Carolina actually worked with me to prevent this man who just was going to decimate chemical safety regulations, and, because he has, he has Fort Bragg, North Carolina, and the groundwater is contaminated with contaminants, so I was able to reach out to him. So I do that all the time. For what you can do, I think, talking with your neighbors. I think that when I was on the campaign, I was doing a lot of what I call, excuse me, let me get a drink of water. I would sit down in people's living rooms, and they, I would ask them to invite all their neighbors, 20 or 30 people, and we'd sit down and have conversations like this, much smaller town halls. And sometimes, we tend to only associate ourselves with people with similar viewpoints, because you just get really frustrated, right? Listening to the other side. But I say, grit your teeth and have those conversations, because you have to start from a place, and this is really hard for me, because I, I, I get so frustrated with the president. I, I try to start from a place where I assume the other person loves this country as much as I do. I have questions about the president, I think, I suspect, I don't know. You, you reach your own conclusions, but at least with other senators, at least with other senators, I, I start off the conversation, no matter how diametrically opposed they are for me politically, I assume that they love this country, this amazing union that we have here, this America, this, this experiment in democracy that we all have inherited and live in, that they love this as much as I do, and that they want to serve it, and they want to make it better. And maybe their vision of what makes it better is different than mine, but, but let's start from that place, that we truly love this democracy, and find a way through that middle ground. And that's how I was able to go talk to Tom Tillis and some of these guys, and, and try to find a way. In the Army, I, I learned about, they taught me the 80% solution. If you spent your entire planning time as an officer to try to come up with 100% perfect solution for a mission, you would never actually get to execute the mission. You need the 80% plan, allow your men to execute, to practice and execute, and then go out there and adjust your miss, your plan as you go, but you're never going to find that perfect solution, because if you do, then it's perfect for you, but it's not perfect for the other person.
And the final question, then, will be from George O'Neill. And a microphone will be brought to him right now, and then after the senator responds, she will be glad to take some photographs, and her staff can come up and kind of direct the logistics to that. So, George.
Thank you for coming, Senator. This is an election question. As you know, we have an election coming up, and you're one of the few Democrats that are not running, and, unfortunately. But what are your thoughts on the election coming up, and do you have some picks or some recommendations, and, and why?
I have to admit, I chose that question purposely, so.
Did you? Excellent. I, gosh, the debates really got me thinking, right? The debates, people's performance at debates, I was like, whoa, what's going on here? I don't have a pick, but I do want somebody from the middle of the country to be in the fight for the nomination for as long as possible. And I'm speaking purely as a selfish Democrat here. I don't think Democrats take over the Senate, I don't think Democrats take over the White House with a ticket that has an East Coaster and a West Coaster on it, and nobody to talk to the industrial Midwest. No one who can talk to my farmers about how they weren't able to plant until June or July of this year. No one to talk to my steelworkers in Granite City about, you know, how, hey, thanks to the tariff wars, they're actually back at work. No one to talk to my coal miners about the fact that he's 55 years old, and he wants to be able to retire, and so you say you shut down the coal mills, here he is, you know, five, 10 years before retirement, what's he going to do? We need somebody who can talk to the middle of the country. And so I hope that the Midwesterners stay in the discussion as long as possible. I think the Mount, I'll throw in the Mountain State guys, too. You know, they're, they're from the middle of the country. I'd like those guys to be in the hunt for as long as possible, and maybe on the ticket. I'd like the Democratic ticket to be somewhere on their top, you know, the, the number one and number two position, someone from the Midwest.